There's talk in legislation, but I have no idea where that's going to come. If that changes, we'll let you know. New Jersey Department of Agriculture will expand the free and reduce eligibility requirements. That will provide free meals to all students, free and reduced. Basically, what that means is they've increased the percentage from above the poverty line. So last year it was 180% over the poverty line. This year it's going to be 200% over the poverty line. So, quick math, if a family of four makes $50,000 and that was their threshold, they were, and they met that threshold, fine. Now, what's happening is that same family of four, that will go up to $55,000. So that will help those families who just miss it be eligible for free or reduced meals. And there will be a cost of living increase in the reimbursement rates, but we haven't seen them yet. They've not been published. Also, what we plan to do is continue to safeguard and continue our safety protocols by cleaning and sanitizing, food safety, appropriate containers still and serving tray for food. Other protocols is mandated by the New Jersey Department of Agriculture and the USDA. So, let's get to the meat of the matter here. Our recommendation is to utilize our recent department profits to provide relief to the families by offering free breakfast to all students and temporarily decrease the lunch prices for the 2022-23 school year. Basically, whatever the math is, 20, as you can see, $2.85 to $2.30, $3.10 to $2.25, and $3.35 to $2.50. Please be mindful that the proposed pricing goes back to 2006. So we're looking at 2006 pricing. So this is our way of helping those families who are in need to hopefully have their children have at least lunch. Breakfast is going to be free. And with that, the only thing I have left is just some acknowledgements. I'd like to express my heartfelt thanks to my staff, specifically my assistant Judy Hackett and Lynn Spall, who have worked hard and dedicated, and their hard work and dedication during this year. I'd like to thank the building administrators and other department heads for their cooperation and flexibility during this school year. And again, a special thanks to Mrs. Promelli and Mrs. Richardson for your unwavering support of our program. With that...
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. I'm trying to look at this P&amp;L statement. I want to understand a little bit. I get that 2019, 2020, all the way till now was COVID-based, so it's kind of skewed. We were getting subsidies from the government, which made us look like we were making a lot of money on it because they were paying us more than what we were paying, I guess, for the meals, you were saying? But 2018, 2019, we were down $168,000. Now, I can see that in benefits. We paid $130,000 more. Our revenue was up 1.4%, though. Where's the rest of that loss? Like, we were up 268 the year before. We only decreased students by 70. That's not going to lose another $100,000. Where, because if this is a business, you're going to go back to the red after these subsidies are gone. And if we keep going in the red, you're going to get deeper and deeper in the hole. What's the plan? And how do I see where the losses are? Because I can't make the math up with this.
Well, if you look at the, if you look at the P&amp;L, that, that 2018, 19, that was the first year that we've, that we, that we had indirect costs that were associated to the, to the program. Okay? So if you look at, on page one, at the very bottom, where you see the indirect cost of $359,000, that's the predominant number. So if you take that, if you take that $3.59 out and add it to the $1.68, that gives us a positive $2.50 at ballpark. And as you can see, our profitability over the, over the next, well, the 6.76, the negative 6.76, that was the, that was the start of COVID. So in March, we effectively lost the last three months of revenue, the last three months of revenue.
Yeah, yeah, I saw that. The 2019 to now, I saw that that would not be a real number because of COVID. So this indirect cost is going higher and higher, right? Now, what does that exactly entail? What is in that indirect cost?
So the indirect, the indirect cost is our, basically, our payment to the district for various services. For example, we'll offset custodial services. For example, we have custodians who clean our kitchens, any of the facilities folks. If any of the HVAC guys or the plumbers or stuff, if they, if we use them, again, it's a way for us to defray some of the cost to the district, trash and so on. So anything that, anything basically that is, that will be, that food services basically utilizes as a, as a service, we're providing back to the district.
So if your indirect cost continues to go up and your benefits of course continues to go up, you're going to be in the red every year, probably?
No. I, I, we, right now, we're, right now, we're sitting on $1.3 million in profit, which basically equates to the amount of money that I have in my, in our, in our funds.
And that's from the subsidies over the last couple of years because of COVID, right?
And that's, well, the 1.8 right now, or the 1.3 right now, was just this past year.
Right, because we were getting money from the government.
Well, yeah, I mean, we were getting money from the government, the amount of meals that we served and how operationally efficient we were as well.
Now, that's going to stop. So eventually, that will be absorbed, that 1.8, because, or do you expect that your profit's going to go up even without the government subsidies?
So, that's a great question. So an answer to your question is this. The state of New Jersey, and I think even the USDA, only allows for us to have what's in our, what's considered three months' worth of operating expenses. Okay? So what happens is, by law, those, that money belongs to the district, I mean, to the food service program. Okay? Also, by law, that food services are not permitted to take any money from the general fund. So we are self, we are self-sufficient. Okay? So with regard to the three-month operating expenses, roughly $700,000 or $800,000 ballpark is what it is. As you can see, we're double that. And the state will basically, we're going to get a slap on the wrist for doing such a good job. So what we need to do is defray that cost, or defray our, our fund balance, if you will. Okay? And a way to do that is to knowingly go into next year, or this coming school year, that we are going to suffer a loss. My guesstimation, and it's, and I say guesstimation, and I'm actually really good with this stuff, but this year, these past couple of years have been really difficult to gauge because of so many unknowns.
Sure.
But my guesstimation is we'll probably lose about $300,000 next year on paper. Okay? It's a paper loss. However, we're still going to have, we're still going to have enough money in the funds to be able to support everything that we need to do. So there, there, your, your question is well-founded, and it's a good question, but there is, there are, there's a method to the madness. And part of that, you know, part of the madness is that we have to comply by some antiquated law that tells us that we could only have X amount of money in our, in our coffers. Now, the funds that we have are, again, are earmarked for food services specifically. If equipment breaks down, repairs and maintenance and so on. But there's only so many, there's only so much I can spend on equipment, and I'm not in a position to just buy equipment for the sake of buying equipment because we have to spend money. So, again, our plan is to intentionally show, or intentionally have a, a paper loss next year to bring down our, to bring down our fund balance. Now, I recently had a conversation with the state regarding this, and they, the USDA still has not come out with a specific, a specific format as to what they're going to do. Because Jackson is not the only school district in the country that faces such a, you know, such a high fund balance or such a high profit for, for the school districts. So they don't know how to address that yet. However, they did tell me that in the event that we do get, we need a corrective action, we've been, we've already been proactive with our, with our plan to offset the, to offset the financials on this, and they're, they're going to be okay with it.
Right, so I know, I see that. I see we're in the green, and I know that this million dollars, over a million dollars, is going to cover us. But I'm looking five years out, like, when that is absorbed.
Oh, yeah, and again, great question. This is, this, this plan is, is a short-term plan. Okay? That, where, you know, we may, you know, in a year, we may have to raise the prices, we may have to raise the prices. Okay? To what, we have no idea. But our plan is to continue to operate efficiently so we can continue to provide the students with, you know, with the nutritious meals that they, that they should have.
All right, thank you. I just have something to think about, but thank you.
So is that plan for a gradual increase over the next couple of years, depending upon what your finance dictate to you?
So...
So you're not going to, next year, go back to where the price should be?
Our, listen, our, our hope is, our hope is that it's not. So I, I look, I look at what we're doing from a, from really a dollar-based averaging mentality in that there are a lot of my, there are a lot of my colleagues who are so frightened with the fact that, you know, we have no idea where the expenses are going to be for next year. I certainly don't, because we have no idea what the cost of anything is going to be. I, I can't even get our vendors to give us a year-long bid because they're only holding pricing for two months. So I'm not in a position, I don't know that I want to be in a position that every two months have to go out to bid again, because that's just a time-consuming process. So, oh my God, I lost my train of thought, I'm sorry.
As far as the increase in pricing is concerned, you're going to play it by year according to expenses, is what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, so, yeah, so I, again, I, I see this only as a, as a short term. It could be, you know, I'm hoping for longer than one year, but this is not, this is not going to be sustained, this is not a permanent, this can't be sustained permanently. I mean, with the rising cost of everything, it's going up, labor, you know, minimum wage laws and so on, that in and of itself is going to be an issue. And also, the cost of goods, we don't know where that's going to take us. So, I mean, again, initially, I had a conversation with Michelle about this, about even possibly increasing the, or continuing to do free even lunches for everyone, but her logic was very sound in that if this doesn't sustain itself for a period of time, then what? We're going to go from zero to 100 in no time, and that's just not fair.
Yeah, that's even worse.
Right, exactly. But my, my plan is, like, going back statistically, if you look at the 63% participation that we do, roughly, roughly 4,000 meals, and we go back to, if we go back to 30%, you know, again, we're talking maybe 25, 28,000, 2,800 meals per day. I'm hedging my bets that we're going to come within 50%, and then this way, those families who can, you know, can afford those, those meals, that we're not going to scare them away at the 3.35 mark at the high schools. So this way, if we give it to them at a 2.50 rate, they may be more inclined, instead of buying lunch once a week, they might be able to buy it three times a week. So that's where I'm hedging my bets.
Any other questions?
I guess I just want to piggyback on what you're saying, Mike. These prices are from 2006, which just seems really low, given the current markets of everything. So I just feel like next year, it's going to be a big jump. It's not going to be a little jump. I don't, I, I feel like you're almost starting too low. And I understand, I want to give the families a break as well, but I think the sticker shock coming is going to be worse down the road.
Well, I'm hoping that the, the negative sticker shock is going to at least have everyone appreciate the fact that what we're doing for them now, as opposed to what's going to happen two years from now.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying, but I, I think that the way we've been operating, I'm very confident that it'll, it'll work itself out. And even, and even, and listen, even if we get to a point, instead of going back to, from $2 to $2.85, that we go from, you know, and we start to graduate upward a little bit as opposed to the full, you know, the full number. So we can go from $2 to $2.25 or $2, you know, from $2 to $2.40 or something like that, that's a little more palatable than going from $2 to $2.85. And I think that with everything else that's going on, we'll be able to sustain that.
Yeah, I just want to add that we spent a lot of time talking about this. We're trying to comply with what the law does. The law will only allow us to keep three months in our coffers there. And we don't want to be written up for not having just the three months, because that, that affects our audit report. You know how crazy I am about the audit report not having any write-ups. So that's, we had to work towards both those goals, to make sure that we maintain an interest in our food program, which has grown tremendously over the last couple of years, and not shock parents this year coming with the price of, you know, $3.35. It doesn't sound like a lot to us, you know, but at the same time, when you look at the multitude of children that we have in the district, it was an issue. We were only having like 36% participation in our food service program prior to COVID. So we want to see if maybe we can gradually get people to really trust our program and eat in our program. We've improved a lot of things, thanks to Joe, especially with the menu upgrade that he just did, where parents can see daily what is on the food program for the day and make decisions. And they'll have all the dietary information that they need, because we have several children who have issues with dietary things. And they'll be able to really make informed decisions. As, and we will definitely be gradually increasing the price, unless, of course, the Department of Agriculture comes out with free lunch again, which we are not, we will not be surprised by that, because we do think that that's a goal of the federal government, to come out with free lunch again. But right now, that, they could not come together on that issue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there also a chance that our federal government will be reimbursing or reimbursing at a higher rate? Is there still going to release those numbers?
That's a good question. I, I don't, I don't know, I don't know at what rate. That's not been published yet. I, if I had to guess, I don't think that the rate is going to be that $4 and change mark. And I, but stranger things have happened, so I have no idea. And if it does, then that, you know, we're all, we're all the better for it. But I'm, I'm guessing that it's going to be probably high, high 390s.
I'm assuming it would be higher than pre-pandemic rate, which, again, would help to offset...
Correct. Historically, the rates have gone up anywhere between 15 and 20 cents a year. I mean, there have been a couple that have been way less than that. But historically, you know, when I, when I, when I've done my budgets prior to, you know, I was, you know, it's 12 to 15 cents per year on the, on the paid reimbursement.
Just had a quick question. So I think it's very nice what you're trying to do and lower the price for people who need it.
Thank you, Michelle, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I think it's really important. We all know that kids have to eat to do well, so I think people would really appreciate it. But I also hear the concern of sticker shock if it changes like midway through. So not everybody watches the stream of this meeting or comes to these meetings. Is it going to be communicated at the very beginning that we are doing this because we can, but if food prices keep going up or your budget or whatever it is, how, how are we communicating to parents well ahead of time that this could possibly change whenever it needs to change?
Well, our anticipation is that it's not going to change for the year. I mean, I, in my, I don't know, 20-plus years of being in schools, we've, I've never, I've never had to increase prices mid-year, thankfully. I hope we don't have to do that this year either. But as far as the communication piece is concerned, in fact, I've been speaking to Allison the past couple of days about communication, about other things, and this is one of the things that we, we definitely need to communicate, that it's only a, you know, a temporary relief in that, you know, hopefully for just the year, that, that it is going to get communicated, along with some other pretty critical things, so...
Ask one more question, not about the funding this way, but the vending machines, just curious.
Which machine?
The vending machines. So if a child does not have enough funds on their card or in their number, in their account, and they go to a vending machine, is it not going to feed a child? Or are they still going to be able to go to the main cafeteria to get food, just like when your kid forgets their money now?
Sure, so, in answer, in answer to your question, to the vending machine, if they don't have enough funds in their accounts, they will not be able to get anything. However, if you, the, the plan at the high schools, these are where they're earmarked, the seating is going to be in each of the cafeterias, as well as the atrium area. Okay? Now, in the atrium area, if you saw the picture, you saw the indoor concession, it's adjacent to that area. So our plan is to put two machines in that atrium area. If a student doesn't have enough money, they can certainly go to the indoor concession, which is closer, or they can go to the other two cafeterias and be able to do what they need to do at that point. 100%, absolutely. I mean, it, it may not be at that moment, at that location, but if they take 20 steps in another direction, they'll be able to get, you know, they'll be able to get to an area where they're, where they're served.
Joe, please remind us how many meals a child in high school would get without funds?
I'm sorry, Michelle, I didn't hear what you said.
How many meals will a high school student get without funds?
How many meals?
Yeah.
I, I think historically, we've had, we, we maxed it out at $25. So based on the 2.50, probably 10 meals, 10, 30 meals. Okay.
Anything else?
I just, I have a silly question.
I was going to say something smart, Al. What, what happens is we just, actually, at that point, so to your, in answer to your question, and this is more toward, for the high school students and not so much the K to H kids, because, you know, our opinion is that the high school students are more aware, more responsible. So we let them know well in advance that you're running low. So we don't tell them, if they have $23 in their account, "Oh, sorry, you can't have lunch today because you've maxed out." We're going to let them know, "Listen, you have $12 in your, you owe $12, you owe $15." And we keep telling them. And when we get close to that, we say, "Listen, if you don't pay, make this current, you're not going to get fed." And we have that as part of, as our, as our board policy as well for the high schools, that we can do that. So we give them way ample notice to, before we get to that point. And under probably nine and a half times out of 10, our bleeding-heart food service people will allow them and will take care of you, so...
I was just going to say, we don't ever let a child go hungry.
No, we don't. We, we really don't. Okay? But we, we, we try to make sure that they pay their obligation. Okay. Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Enjoy the rest of your summer.
Thank you. And I, I just want to note that I hear what the board is saying in regards to being careful as we move forward and having to increase prices, that we do it gradually, so it doesn't feel like a huge shock. But, you know, I, I do believe, and what I'm hearing is that we'll be able to do that. And I do believe that moving forward, our federal government will probably reimburse us at a little bit higher rate. But most importantly, for this, this upcoming school year, I wholeheartedly feel with the economy the way that it is right now, that we're going to have families really struggling. So to have these prices low, I think, will be a tremendous help to our families this, this upcoming year. So thank you for those presentations. Moving forward, just one last comment from me, and then I'll close my report. I just wanted to, again, let our board know and our community know that the Jackson School District is currently hiring substitutes. I want to do a little plug here for us. In the past, we have used a service contractor to have substitutes in the district. We are no longer using that contractor, and we are hiring substitutes within the school district. So that you will be a substitute employee of the Jackson School District. It's a great place to work. Little plug, please come, sign up. Application is on our website. Please take a look, and we would love to have some of our community members, who are able to sub for us, join us here in the district. So please check out our website. And with that, I close superintendent's comments this evening, Mr. Walsh.
Thank you, Mrs. Promelli. Okay, standing committee reports. State and county school board rep.
Tomorrow, there's a meeting to go over the calendar for the next fiscal school year.
Parent group liaison, we will meet again in the fall, probably in late September. Special education.
Hi, okay, so we are not meeting in the summer. I believe our next meeting will be in the fall.
Scholarship, I plan on meeting over the summer with the new director of guidance to start putting next year's scholarship presentation together. Looks like it's going to be May 31st. Buildings and grounds. Okay, we met today, went over the projects which are going on. Right now, we got some construction going on in the fuel depot for transportation. We have some projects on the electric garbage truck, which, that's actually on the board minutes tonight for approval, and the building of the station, okay, to power it up. There's also school buses, electric buses that are on tonight's agenda. All right, there is work which is being done at Get School. They're putting up new walls. We have a plumbing project going on. In that plumbing project, Memorial's almost finished, okay? But starting in September, Ocean County Vo-Tech will be helping with that project under the supervision of a licensed plumber. Okay, let's see, we have tennis courts, which are in their final phase of being striped over there at Jackson Memorial High School. The track at Jackson Liberty High School has been cleaned and restripped, and the Jackson Memorial High School track is going to be resurfaced and striped. We have a parking lot project going on this summer in Elms and also in Memorial. The fire alarm system at Getz is being upgraded, and Holman is having their stage repaired. And that is it. Okay, next, transportation.
We have not had a meeting in transportation this month, so I'm not sure when our next one is. Do you know, Mr. Walsh?
Did we schedule a meeting for transportation? No, not yet. We will...
We didn't schedule it, but we will schedule it for probably late September.
Late September, okay. Okay, curriculum committee.
We haven't met since our, the last update. Again, we're scheduled, it looks like we're trying to schedule for August to have a meeting.
Thank you. Policy committee.
Policy Subcommittee met on July 11th. Some of the policies that we did review, high school students represent, representatives to the Board of Education, which is revised and mandated, Every Student Succeeds Act, which is revised and mandated, Care of School Property, which was revised and mandated, School District Issuing Student Identification Cards, which was revised and mandated. For more information on these policies or any district policies, please visit our district website for detail.
Thank you. Enrollment Study Committee has not met. We will meet sometime in the fall. Okay, I need a motion for approval of policy and regulations, second reading.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, roll call.
Mrs. Baracus?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
Mr. Sargent?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
And Mr. Walsh?
Yes. Need a motion for approval of the minutes. Official board meeting June 2nd, special board meeting. Official board meeting June 22nd, okay, closed session meeting. Official board meeting June 22nd, committee of the whole and business meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, roll call.
Mrs. Baracus?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
Mr. Sargent?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes. Need a motion for approval of the bill list.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. I do have a question. The aid and lieu which is being paid in that bill list... The aid and lieu which is being paid in that bill list, is that for the second payment of last year or the first payment of this year?
This is the July payment, so it's the second payment of last year.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Baracus?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
Mr. Sargent?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
And Mr. Walsh?
Yes. Need a motion for approval that treasurers and board secretaries report.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, roll call.
Mrs. Baracus?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
Mr. Sargent?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes. Need a motion to open public forum on agenda items only. We will hold another public forum during the meeting for other questions. This public forum will be for questions on the agenda only.
Motion.
Second.
Seeing no one come forward, I need a motion to close public forum.
Motion.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Resolution for action. Motion to move finance.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Question number four. Capital asset and valuation service. What is that about?
Every year, we have a report of all of our assets in the district, all of our buildings, our vehicles, everything that we own as a district. We have a report that is formulated for that. We've been using the same company for about 20 years. They decided to close their doors, so we went out to Ocean County and asked everybody, "Well, who are you using?" Because it's required for insurance purposes, so they know what to insure us at. And we, we had three companies, we asked them for proposals, and this is the company that we decided to go with, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Seeing no more discussion, roll call.
Mrs. Baracus?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
Mr. Sargent?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
And Mr. Walsh?
Yes. Motion for facilities.
Motion.
Discussion. Number three, I just want to give kudos to Mr. Blair. He's working on those 10 electric buses. He's finding more ways to save energy in here than anyone I know. Seeing no other discussion, roll call.
Mrs. Baracus?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
Mr. Sargent?
Yes.
And Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
And Mr. Walsh?
Yes. Motion to move students.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, roll call.
Mrs. Baracus?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
Mr. Sargent?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes. Motion to move personnel.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Baracus?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
Mr. Sargent?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes. I'm rolling here. Did I skip programs?
Yes, you did.
I did. Motion to move programs.
Motion.
Discussion. Seeing no discussion, roll call.
Mrs. Baracus?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
Mr. Sargent?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
And Mr. Walsh?
Yes. Need a motion to open public forum on any topic pertaining to the Board of Education.
Motion.
Second.
Please sign in, state your name and whether or not you are a Jackson resident. Each person is allowed a maximum of five minutes to speak. No person may speak more than once on any topic until others have been heard. Seeing no one come to the podium, okay, I need a motion to close public forum.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We going to go into executive session? We'll do comments first and then go into closed session? Is that good? Okay. So, board comments?
I just want to thank everyone for the presentations tonight. They're always very helpful. I just want to wish everybody at home, I hope you're having a great summer. I hope you're taking advantage of some of the programs that we have. And I hope everybody's also enjoying the sun in their vacations and the students are getting some rest while they're working on their summer program, projects that they have to do and have in time. So other than that, I hope everyone has a good night.
Mr. Palmieri?
Just wanted to wish everyone a safe, happy summer. Want everyone to know that your board and your superintendent and her entire staff are still working very diligently behind the scenes, and we look forward to seeing you in September. I know a lot of students are hearing this, saying not, don't rush it, but enjoy. Thank you.
I hope everyone's enjoying their summer with their friends and family, and also I think the, the schools are putting, the summer program is putting on a production of Peter Pan. So if you guys are looking for something to do, maybe get some tickets and enjoy it with your family and friends. Thanks. Thank you all for coming out, if you're here tonight or if you're watching this, and enjoy the rest of your summer.
Thank you all for coming out. Enjoy the rest of your summer.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out, your input and presentations. Everyone have a safe and wonderful evening.
Everyone have a good summer. I see that there's a lot of learning going on within this district, even though the schools are closed. There's a lot of development going on. The administrators this week and teachers are doing curriculum development, and we're doing a lot of work on the grounds and the facilities. So there's a lot going on around here.